Data that we have, including map testing, predicted proficiency, which are scores we get from last year's state tests. Using Mark's data studio platform, restart readiness, as well as last year's test scores and value-added data to determine what students needed to review over those next six to eight weeks, depending on when their testing fell. And then we had some great support from our coaches, Anne Berger from the county and Kelsey Ryback, who's our literacy coach. And they shared some really fun, engaging resources for the teachers to use in the classroom during some PDs and PLCs. It's a very tiny picture of one of the PDs that Kelsey Ryback put on for our staff with some really exciting games. And I think what's great about Kelsey is having just left the classroom. She's not too far removed from doing all these awesome fun things with her classes. So she's shared some great things with our teachers that were new to them. So I wanted to share a little bit about what that white looked like in the classroom. First of all, is a game called Grudge Ball, which the kids loved. Each team had a certain number of Xs. This one shows 10, some started with eight or six. And as your team got questions correct, state test, so it was either reading a passage and answering a comprehension question or solving a math problem. If you got it correct and brought your correct answer to the teacher, you got to run up to the board and erase one of the other team's Xs. So whoever had the most Xs at the end, obviously, was the winner. And a little competition, a little fun to that planning. And the same kind of idea with Connect Four. Different teams got different colored post-it notes. And as they solved a problem correctly, they got to add a post-it note to their Connect Four. Whoever got four in a row first was the winner. So again, some just fun and engaging ways to make a little competition out of state testing. And the other two are pictures of some of our teachers' back planning. And again, I know that's challenging to read, but it goes all the way down to individual standards that they were reviewing in ELA or math that was specific to their grade and their tested area, making sure that those kids were getting what their class needed to review, not just a blanketed overview for every subject at the grade level. Some other things in the classroom are fifth graders. Any team Aspire people here? Oh, Aspire. Aspire was our winners today for fifth grade. But they had a great challenge board. They had individual teams in the classroom that ended today with our assembly, which I'll get to tell you a little bit more about. And also collecting badges and patches on those backpacks. Again, for their team to get on the leaderboard to participate in some challenges today. And creating goals and action plans, goal-setting and action plans for the students is always really important here. Obviously, you'll see a web of some ideas that students had. Show what they know, work the entire time, stay focused, earn a 700 or higher, which is that passing score if they read and use your time wisely. Students also goal-set from their individual scores in third grade that they took in the fall. And our fourth and fifth grade students use their most recent restart readiness scores to make some goal-setting for themselves to see how they can grow from that. Last time we took that test in February to the end of the year. All right, data talks. We all love numbers. So I just wanted to share that we currently have 170 students in Spalding receiving phonics or fluency intervention. It's 40 minutes a day, five days a week, which is just amazing that we have that intervention support for our students. And we have an additional 45 students in ELA that are receiving an additional 30 minutes of phonics intervention every single day. So some of our most struggling students can get up to 70 extra minutes of support a day just in language arts. And then you add on that math. We have 144 students that are receiving math intervention. Some of those kids are double-dipped with language arts at times. But then 63 of those students are getting an additional day of a math intervention. So that's three days a week versus two days. So it's just amazing, the intervention support we're able to provide for our students. So we're very, very grateful for everything you guys have given us with our staffing. With testing, obviously, it's also important to get the parents and guardians engaged and involved. It's got to be that triangle, right? Staff, students, and parents getting everything together. So for all of our third grade students that were impacted by the third grade guarantee, we scheduled conferences for every single one of those families to make sure we can touch base with them about where our students are. We also sent home letters offering summer school to those third grade students that were at risk of not being promoted. And then information on how to support those kiddos during state testing was sent home in our online and paper newsletters. And I've been able to also use Kinbo to send out messages. I did that just today, to remind the parents about the test coming up tomorrow. Get a good night's sleep, eat breakfast, and please, charge your computer. So like I said, I'm still kind of on a high from today. We had our third and fifth grade state test assemblies today. And last week was fourth grade. Third grade kind of went for an Olympic theme, go for the gold. You can see that they all had flags that they'd made and walked all the way around the building and marched into the gym and did a lap around the gym while I screamed into a microphone their team name. And they cheered for each other. But then they had a soccer knockout, soccer knockout and basketball knockout for the kids that had made their leaderboard for showing the most effort in class, which was a lot of fun. And their winners got a little extra prize today. Fourth grade last week had a glow party, which was pretty fun. We turned off all the lights in the gym, got black lights. The kids wore neon and had glow-in-the-dark bracelets. And also got to sign that banner up there, which was super cool to see in the dark because it was highlighter, so everything glowed really neon. The kids had a lot of fun. And then today, we had also our fifth grade, broken into teams, aspire, venture, quest, and journey. And the students on that leaderboard that had earned the most badges during class time got to participate in a series of challenges, including sprinting to dig a bag out of a recycling bin, fishing line to get a magnet and pull it back to you, launching bean bags into a hula hoop, which really went over the basketball hoop and not so much into the hula hoop. But the kids had a blast, ending with having to solve a puzzle of the warrior symbol they see up there for the winner. And Team Aspire was the winner, which is Miss Denny Duckheart and Gephardt's class. And they were pretty jazzed. I don't think I've seen the gym that lively in a while. A lot of banging on bleachers today. But I hope they bring that energy, you know, with them as they come to the test. And the last thing I wanted to share is just some rewards and incentives. We bought popsicles after every single test for the students that showed their best effort, which I know will be every single one of them, and pass those out in the cafeteria just as a little consistent incentive to keep working. And what I'm really excited about is not only getting the scores back before we leave this year, little accountability for everyone when you got to look Miss Andrew's in the eye. But we were able to partner with Team 75, and they did give us a little bit of a discount, which is great. But we have $50 gift cards for each test. So third grade reading and math, fourth grade reading and math, and fifth grade reading, math, and science. And the better the students do, the more times they have to put their name into a drawing to be a chance to be the winner. So it'll be an exciting thing to keep them incentivized as we work through this. So I'll give you a little update on the fun things that we've been going on. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stam and our amazing student ambassadors.
All right, hello. I'm Kylie Stam. I'm the school counselor at Spalding. We just wanted to come and highlight one of the programs that we are doing with our fifth graders this year at school. It's a new program, and I'm really excited about it. And I know our ambassadors are really excited about it. So we just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about what that looks like, what we're doing, and then some plans that we have for next year. So being a student ambassador is really just an opportunity for students to grow their leadership skills, their communication skills, kind of be that person in the school for other students to look towards, to look up to, and just kind of encourage other students to take a more active role in the school community. So this is an opportunity for students to kind of just like work on their leadership skills and start showing other students what it could be as they become fifth graders. And so kind of talking about that, our student ambassador program is specifically for fifth grade students at Spalding. We piloted it this year. We did nominations in November. And so fifth grade teachers were asked to nominate one student in their class that they felt exemplified a leader. So we have a student from every single fifth grade class that was nominated to be a student ambassador. At that point, I met with all of the students to just kind of discuss what a student ambassador might look like, what the expectations of this is. And then just to kind of see, is this something you're interested in? Because in order for it to be successful, we would need that student buy-in. And so we were really fortunate that every single student that was nominated was very excited to be a part of the group. And then we just kind of started moving full steam ahead. So what a student ambassador looks like this year. We try to have at least once a month meetings. At this point, we have a meeting in the mornings. I know as fifth grade, they're very busy. Their schedules are very busy. So we tried to take the least amount of instructional time, but we still want this to be impactful. So we try to meet once a month, at least in the mornings. We get together, we talk about, you know, what have we done? What do we want to do moving forward? And it's just an opportunity to kind of touch base on how the ambassadors are doing and how things are going at school because they have a totally different perspective than I am as the school counselor. So some of the things that we've done so far. We did a glove drive, and we were really excited to kind of get that out into the school. We had just kind of a box up front where students and staff could bring in gloves or hats or scarves in the colder months. And we were able to put that in towards the donation of, I have a supply in my supply closet to give to students who might not have those types of resources. Another thing we did was encouraging post-its. So just spent a meeting where all of the ambassadors wrote down something really positive, maybe like, "You can do it," or "I believe in you," or "Keep trying." And then we put them up around the school. Specifically, I know you probably have seen like in bathrooms on the mirrors. We did that a lot. We did that in student and staff bathrooms. And we got a lot of really positive feedback about that. And then we did a kindness month initiative where we, throughout the month of February, just tried to do different kind activities. But the ambassadors helped put up all of these kind notes that students were able to write down, what's a kind thing they did that month. And so every single student had the opportunity to write something down. And right outside of the library, the ambassadors put these really, really colorful notes up. And it was really cool to see just kind of all of the kind things that students had done. And then also, as the ambassadors were putting them up, people were walking by like, "What are you guys doing?" And so it was an opportunity for them to kind of share, you know, what they're doing, what a student ambassador is, and just kind of help spread that message. And in some of our last meetings, we talked about, you know, what would we like to do in the future? You know, we've still got some time left in the school year. We still have an opportunity to make an impact. So I asked our ambassadors, you know, "What do you want to do?" And so some ideas were maybe a fundraiser for like school supplies for students or school or for equipment. We talked about hygiene kits in the bathroom, especially this time of year. I think we all know that hygiene kits are probably really important for our kids. And so just having that accessible in the bathrooms because it might be something where a student might not feel comfortable, you know, going to ask for deodorant or tissues or chapstick or something like that. We talked about school-wide these days to kind of boost that warrior pride and that warrior spirit throughout the rest of the year. We talked a lot about state testing. So whether that be like helping prepare for state testing or, you know, at the end of state testing, when we're doing the celebrations, maybe like helping out the third grade or, you know, and having that be an opportunity for our ambassadors to make those connections with the younger students and give them the idea of, "Oh, I could do that when I'm in fifth grade." And then just a lot of, a lot of really great ideas. And it has all been ambassador-led. I've just been there to kind of facilitate these conversations. And I've felt really fortunate to be able to work with this group of students because they are so motivated and so positive. And you can really tell that they're excited to be ambassadors and excited to be a part of this. And also just to kind of, you know, work towards a positive school community. And that's a really, a really neat thing to see. So our student ambassadors, like I said, we have one from every fifth grade class. I feel very, very lucky that we have three here today with us. I know that they have state testing tomorrow, and we've got practices. And life is really busy, so I'm really thankful that they're here. So we have Smokey Miracle. We have Tanner Donovan. We have Tucker Schaub, Izzy Hayes, Haley Bryant, Charlotte Rowland, Bailey Myers, Landon Ludlam, and then Mylan Mann. So we have a really, really strong group of students. And typically, I may not be able to work with all of these students unless I had something like student ambassadors. So this has been a really great opportunity to, you know, kind of strengthen my relationships with students and then also allow them to have an opportunity to kind of grow their leadership skills. We talked a little bit about some of our PBIS meetings and some of our administration meetings, like what can we do next year to make this even stronger? We talked a lot about sending out the nominations earlier. We had our nominations in, I think, right before Thanksgiving this year. And so it definitely takes some time for teachers to know their students and know their students' strengths, but maybe a little bit sooner so we can kind of get the ball rolling even sooner. We talked about maybe working with PTO to have students help with school-wide events, so whether that be the luos or the dances or the breakfasts. And then we talked about actively working towards opportunities for students to maybe go out into the community because our ambassadors are, you know, these are the faces of our Spalding community. And so maybe partnering with Shelley Gerazzi or Crystal Gilbert or something like that so that they can go out into the community and kind of spread that message. And then just monthly events, maybe for our ambassadors to kind of work on or work towards. And, you know, I think there's a lot of room for growth, a lot of room for opportunity. But I'm also really, really proud of the work that the ambassadors have done so far this year. These are just some pictures. I do have Bailey and Haley have written something just about their experience as a student ambassador. And so now's the time that I would, I would love for them to just be able to share that with you guys.
Experience with the student ambassador program is really great. It's kind of like a way to spread more kindness around the school. It also helps give back to Spalding and our community. It is a really great experience. I can't wait to see the ambassadors next year have an awesome time, too.
Being a student ambassador at Spalding Elementary has been a very great school. I love being able to help students and teachers around our school. It feels really amazing to be a part of this program. This group has amazing ideas for what we could do to help out in the school. I think this program should be continued for years to come because this program provides help for our students and can show to our students what it means to be a warrior at Spalding Elementary.
And Deanna, do you have like something that we've done that you really enjoyed? Like, is there something that you thought was a fun project that you liked, that we did?
I don't have a favorite, but I just like thinking of ways to like help out the school for like the students and the teachers.
So yeah, like I said, working with these students has been incredible. It's really amazing to see those leadership skills kind of just start to be sparked in the students, especially because fifth grade, you know, this is an opportunity. We're going into middle school next year. And I can only just imagine the wonderful things they're going to do next year and beyond that. And so yeah, that's what I've got for our ambassadors.
I wanted to round that out, just making some connections to our portrait of a graduate. I'm sure you could see them just as the kids were talking. But the first one academically prepared. Thought this one was great because there's not a lot of opportunities for volunteer service at an elementary level. And I think it gave those kids a great taste of what that would look like, which could translate into college and career pathways as they get those service hours in high school. And brilliant leaders, the members of our student ambassador program have a growth mindset, putting hard work to complete those projects that they created. They're also influencing the emotional health of our students and staff through the kindness notes. I have to say, every time I went to the bathroom, it made me smile to tell me how beautiful I was. And effective communicators, students work on their collaboration skills and active listening as members of the group, brainstorming new initiatives. They're using collaboration and teamwork as they work together. Socially responsible, our student ambassadors, the height of character building at Spalding. They were rated on their leadership, responsibility, respect, period or actions, problem-solving, and the application process that the teachers nominated them on. And last but not least, our fearless leaders helping develop their ideas as students using their creativity and innovation to critically think through what projects they should tackle next. So it's really exciting to see all five elements of a portrait of a graduate wrapped up in one program. So. And I just wanted to wrap up today, talking to a little bit about what we have upcoming at Spalding. Really excited. And everyone, please cross all of your fingers and toes that we have good weather on April 28th for our last family picnic day. That's been a great success so far for our community. We've got a couple of field trips coming up. Third grade's heading to the zoo. And our fifth grade and second grade tours. Our fifth graders are headed up to GMS. And we've got our second graders coming up to Spalding, which is always a fun day. The observatory is coming back to visit our fifth graders, and they're heading to Fort Agent. The ocean library is coming to share about the summer programming they're offering. The third grade, very traditional kickball tournament, which I'm sure if you've been around, you know about. And wrapping up the year with celebration day. So it's going to be a good end of the year. So thank you so much. Can I get my friends to come back up?
Yes, we have.
Loud and proud to hold this up for me, Haley. Haley Bryant, right here. Tanner Donovan, thank you, sir. Mr. Edwards has a pin three guys as well.
Get the picture here first.
Smile.
Congratulations. Good work. Would be good leaders. I like that. Thank you, guys.
I just want to tell you, kiddos, it's a great start to leadership, honestly. I work for the University of Cincinnati, and we have student ambassadors in college. So this is right where it starts. And then keep in mind this leadership as you go into middle school because you're going to be able to apply for things like NJHS. And they ask like, what kind of leadership things can you put on? And this is something you can put on there. So great job, and keep working hard, okay?
Haley, did you want to tell us who you brought with you tonight?
I brought my mom, my dad, and my brother.
Tanner?
I brought my mom, my stepdad, and my baby sister.
Bailey?
Yeah, I brought my dad.
Thank you guys so much for bringing him.
If any of you would like to leave at this time, or you're more than welcome to stay. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Go home and get some good rest. Yes, you all have testing tomorrow.
Good luck to everybody.
Thank you again. Thank you. Well, get in those laptops where those pro... Right, charge everything. Oh. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Edwards to bring us an update on the facilities committee and the tornado work.
Mr. Schinkel's been forwarding emails from our roofing company, who is progressing across the high school here. They are starting tomorrow on the high school gym roof. So we're progressing slowly but surely as long as the weather holds out. If you need to work, if you go back, you'll notice today they filled the yards up with metal for the roofs. Next Friday, we're meeting with the insurance company for what we hope to be our final meeting to get our final settlement. This Friday, well, next, that's not next Friday.
Yeah, last week was next Friday.
And Mr. Schinkel, anything else on that stuff?
No, I think that you guys all heard we had another leak. We had a leak in our art room down there. They kind of assembled all that. So that was a little extra bonus over the spring break. Spring break that everyone got to come back to. But they've been working with us on that. And you can tell they've, they've come to the spot now where they're, they're done because of all the testing and stuff that started, safety and that sort of thing. So hopefully, they'll get on it. But the gym roof's going to get started, like I said, tomorrow, so.
You'll notice they'll go back and they'll put the metal on what's been taken off and then pause with taking off any new...
I'm sure you guys are excited about this, but is testing at the high school starting?
No, it's been actually going on last week. Yes, that was certainly a concern. Oh, it was loud.
Oh, it was super loud on the metal. On the gym, you know, our hope is that it'll concentrate there. So if we get to play volleyball and basketball, it's something we'll be okay. It's our hope.
So the, the next piece that's there is the facilities committee. And so just a reminder, with our information here, all of which was in your packet, but I want to do just a review really quickly. Back in December, we set a timeline to be examining our facilities needs and what were our next steps, which included our core group meetings with Elevar. In other words, that we were doing a May master planning, going back, reviewing the data to make sure we're still on track for what we need, and so on and so forth. Then we were going to take some plans to the facilities committee for feedback. We are now to the April 17th board meeting that we are going to present you some options, that feedback, and ask you what other information you need. Because if you're going to do something with facilities during the fall at a November timeline, it's just a reminder that that is the timeline up there and in May, the timeline for that for May of 2024. So what did we do? We went through a master planning process. And our school administrative team, along with architects, rank ordered the highest priority needs that we had among enrollment projections across the time. Which ones are most urgent? among enrollment projections across the time, which ones are most urgent. Then we developed some alternatives and possible solutions that would best meet the educational needs of our students and that were safe. Then we developed some, with that, some alternative solutions and the cost for those solutions based upon what we saw were the very highest priorities for our school district's facilities. So we took those to the facilities committee and several of you were on that committee. So you were there. We presented different options, one of which was run a similar facilities plan. What would a, to run the exact facilities plan from November of 2022, what would that cost of our taxpayers in November 23 or 2024, including new construction costs? We know there's been a lot of inflation, interest rates. But there was a lot of feedback from people that that plan definitely met our future growth needs. And we heard positive feedback on the plan itself. So that plan was originally in 2022, just under $50 million. But with inflation, interest rates, all of those good things, it went up to $56 million to run that for the fall of 2023. Then we looked at some other alternatives based upon what are our most pressing needs. And we know that our most pressing needs are at middle school and high school, for example. We also knew that what would be, we wanted to present what would be some very fiscally sensitive that would improve the safety and learning environment for our future students. And also minimize the disruptions to learning and not having a learning space. So we looked at the enrollment study on this phased approach and said, well, where did our needs really get most critical? It's two or three years down the road where we really start to jump up over 3,200 kids in our 29 that we currently have. And then, of course, our facilities or our, our school district eventually growing to 3,511 students. So using all this information, we said, all right, if we're looking at pieces or different pieces, does only a four, six building solve our problems? And the answer was no, because what our needs are greatest are, are very great at the high school too as well. We also pulled out some items to say, okay, if we don't include some of these items like playgrounds, furniture, technology, infrastructure, site safety, traffic improvements, and we found a different way to try to pay for pieces of those, or just took it out of the plan and dealt only with space, what would that look like? So in each of the options that come forward that we presented to our facilities committee, each of these options had no, none of these items included in those. So a second option that was presented would be that we would add 12 classrooms at the high school, 10 classrooms at Spalding, 10 classrooms at GMS, high school fine arts and physical education additions, food service upgrades at the high school, remove the middle school ones from that plan, and renovated small group, Marcook, GMS, SES, small group learning areas. That plan would run about $20 million. The hope would be that that would stem the need for having, you know, as much, provide as much space as affordable as possible for the longest period of time, knowing that a phase two at one point in time would be necessary, hopefully 10, 15, 20 years from now, if we added this significant amount of space. So that was the second option. Now each of the next several options are gonna present a different one. Option three, if you can look, it's very similar to option two. It runs a little bit cheaper at 17 million, 17.8 million. And that would be putting the food service additions back into GMS and taking out small group learning areas at Spalding and GMS. A lot of people say, why are small group learning areas important? And I think Mrs. Andrews just illustrated so much of that with 170 kids getting reading intervention, tier two, more intensive, 45 kids, that's 215 kids getting reading intervention. Or you do that, you do that small group learning areas. And of course, a phase two would be needed down the road here as well, too. But other than that, it's the same as face option two. An option four, look at adding, removed the academic space at the middle school and put in, and removed the small group learning areas at Marcook and GMS. And that was running around 15 million. And then option five, said what's the most critical need, the most critical needs, high school. And so we're gonna add classrooms at high school. And we would not do anything in the other building. So we presented those to the facilities committee. And we found that, so what we did was we took every statement, every person that was there that night had the ability and opportunity to give input electronically. And we took each one of these and we categorized the statement as a positive statement for option one or a negative statement for option one. And if it couldn't be determined, we said it was neutral. So in option one, there were 41% of the responses were positive, 56% were negative, and 2.6% were neutral. A lot of the negative were faced or were the kind of, this is a great plan. However, the voters rejected that plan. So that would have been deemed as a, as a negative statement. Option two, sorry, what's wrong with my, option two. If you recall, that was adding space at high school, Spalding, GMS, and the additions of the fine arts classroom, PE classroom, food service upgrade, and renovate a small group areas at the three buildings. That one there received 73% positive, 8% negative, 18.9% neutral. There are individual comments on each one of this. We, we've included that in your packet for your reading because we don't have to make any decisions today on anything. This is just a data review for you. Option three, again, that removes small group learning areas from Spalding and GMS and put in the food service upgrades at GMS. That will receive 32% positive, 41% negative, and a lot of neutral statements at 26.5. Option four, which removed academic space at GMS, really focused on making additions only at the high school and Spalding. The idea behind a space at Spalding was you may have to end up moving some grade levels around from the middle school to, to help meet their need. And this one received very few positive statements. Just had a lot of middle school families in there. Option five was focus only on the high school. And again, very few, well, no positive statements, a lot of neutral statements. So then we kind of categorized and said, what are the themes in this data? One of them is equity. There are a lot of statements made like, that, that focus that all the buildings needed to be touched in some manner. So you can look at the first statement, I like option one, but it cannot win. Too expensive, all of the buildings need help. Just helping the high school doesn't help everyone else. They all have needs. First thought's not even to consider option four and five. It's all about the high school. Many people feel that the high school's the newest building. It would not need improvements. It's important that every building gets updates, spread out so all buildings get more space instead of stuff getting. So it's definitely an equity piece on making sure that everybody can get touched in some manner. Can I go back two seconds? In other words, which options present, that you can't just come back in four or five years and ask your community for support? So which ones would allow us to meet our facility needs for the longest period of time? And that's really what these questions kind of focused around. Some of these tended to lie with option one and option two were the favorites of people of these categories. With statements like option one covers everything, original plan from two years ago is the way to go. Which never planned harder would be needed. And all of the others, three, four, and five only kick the can down the river. Then there was a, a theme with, what's the best compromise that meets the needs for the biggest period of time, but not as big of a solution? And you can see he's focused on positive statements with number two, option two, and option three. Option one is a good plan. There were a lot of statements out there that a lot of people in that room still felt that this was, that option one was the best plan and it covers everything and prices are only gonna continue to go up. It wasn't like we went out, designed a Cadillac plan. It was a plan that was supposed to meet the needs of our community and school. And then there was one, option one also has challenges. And we all know what those challenges are. And that hasn't been successful. And then remember, we pulled safety out along with other items. And he said, this is the theme of, we need to, hey, we need to put safety, traffic. By safety, that does not mean locked doors. That was traffic and sidewalks and, and traffic flow. Then there were the ones on needing space and keeping the cost low. So again, we just presented five solutions to try to hear community members, staff members' feedback. These aren't the only options. They're literally, it's infinite, no matter how many, you know, how you wanna, you know, shake it out and work with it. But I think it provides us a good sense of data from that community, some good feedback. I guess my, the individual comments are in your packet. I know we're gonna talk about this at our upcoming retreat. I know we're gonna talk about this at upcoming meetings as we go to make decisions. What questions do you guys have? What other information do you need? Are there any comments that you would like to make?
It's all good information. Great. One thing stands out, which I've heard from a bunch of people when they've had it. Again, this is something we'll discuss in the future. If you like the, the high school. I feel like sometimes people were focusing on the high school as far as, like Fabian said, this building, why does it need anything? You know, just people need to understand we're out of room. And when we built this high school, we knew we were gonna be out of room. The state would not allow us to build any larger than we did. In order to get state, state funding for the high school, we couldn't build it any larger than we did.
So my school's also over 20 years old.
Right, right.
It's not really that new.
Right, but I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I think that's, we've heard that a few times, you know, a few times. That's just something I think we need to discuss to make sure that gets out there too, why the need for the expansionizing, all the additional programs we have.
Can actually we get that information to look at at our retreat or when we're looking at this next phase? That like the number of classes, the number of classrooms, like where that need is at each, right? Cause there at the end, like it said, you know, high school's the priority. Obviously, Spalding's a priority because we have trailers out there right now. So it's already too small. But that for each kind of grade building breakdown?
Yes.
What, what the numbers are, projected numbers, and then need?
I think that would be helpful. Be considering this.
And when they look at the high school too, like, you know, the other buildings you look and we're just, just for the sheer number of students, we need the space for the sheer number of students. High school, we need the space because of our offerings in the high school. And we want to continue those offerings for the students. Not that they're gonna be, say, think of it as like a fire code. You know, those buildings are closer to violating fire code because they're, you know, have so many in a building. High school, it's not that, you know, students push their foot as we're not all crammed in. But in order to keep the offerings we, we have, we want to expand the high school. And that's just being open, you know, that's why you need to.
We never want to say no to an opportunity for our kids.
Right.
Because of space.
In addition to the classrooms and grade levels, can we also include the intervention teachers at each building so that we know how many potential small group spaces could be required at each building level?
Yeah, and Elevar, in working with us early on, I know we have, but yeah, we will have a chunk of that data. Now, part of that also is we can tell you how many we've got right now. Intervention teachers, intervention tutors, aides that do intervention. We can tell you how many we have now. That's a little more challenging to predict than just a flat out classroom. Because once you get so many more kids, they're gonna say you need another classroom. And we can do that one a little bit easier.
But two, there's a slide out there that talks about teaching stations, if you remember. Cause you've got classrooms that aren't really teaching stations. So if you look at it, you'd say, you know, Becca Strauss has always been the favorite one to say she's teaching an old copier, right? So there, when you look at how this building was built, they built it with so many teaching stations, which is where we've now gone into other spaces to make teaching stations that aren't, that weren't meant to be classrooms.
Right.
So that's that piece of it where you've got a real number and then you've taken an adapted space and pushed as far as you can push. So I think that's the, you can, you know, you can look at the number of third grade teaching stations, but we've gone from eight teachers to 10. So you've pushed into other areas where you've added intervention, you've added specials and those have had to go on carts and things like that. So I, I think as we look at those numbers, that's the pieces to keep in mind is what was it actually meant to be? What is?
Yeah, well, and I think looking at that picture for us is important, right? Like, understanding how many are teaching out of cart and moving classroom to classroom. How many, in each building, are sharing spaces, what those spaces are. And we know that there's only need from there, but.
Right, so I think what we can do is probably take a picture of the year 2030, 31. I think it's the last one on that chart. Say in 2030, 31, here's how many stations we would need for that many teachers. For today, I can say, here's how many kids we have for that many teachers, for that many stations. And then what we can look at is, and then we'll say stations. It won't be a flat out division number because you've got specials, you know, like Arco, you know, that takes a classroom. And then I could also use a number of intervention personnel that currently exist in each building that would need a space.
Yeah.
So now we are creative in how we usually get those intervention personnel to share space. We can, we can come up with that, so. Is there anything else, any other questions about the information that you had? Is it a presentable format to you?
Yes, it is.
You've got every comment that was made. So you probably recognize somebody from somebody that was in your group and you sat in that room. These comments.
I think in our group that night, if you look on option two, the only negative thing we had in our group was why are we doing something at the high school cafeteria and not at the middle school? And that was the only thing that our group didn't like. The other thing that we talked about was this 2.99 mils on option two. You could raise that maybe to four mils on a levee and take care of a few of these things.
Is there a traffic situation?
Yeah, right. There's, you know, you have some money to, you know, we're not gonna be building 12 miles of roads, but you could use that extra money to.
Yeah, we.
Push the traffic.
Daryl and I actually discussed the cafeteria issue last night.
So that was just what our group thought.
There were lots of comments that need to be made. So what I would say to the board is on Saturday, and then at future board meetings, as you make a decision, as you start to be looking at this stuff, I would say to you that you need to be deciding some things like, so, I mean, it starts with basic principles are so on. What's the best plan that our public will find palatable? That they'll accept, that'll meet the needs of our students the longest? So you're gonna need to make a lot of decisions like, okay, you know, is it, you know, what size of an issue would that be? When would that issue be run? At that point in time, you can also be sending administrative team back and saying, well, here's what our general philosophy is. We believe in statement one, equity, every building needs to be touched in some manner. So include that, go back, we like these things, we'd like for you to look. We like these things, we'd like for you to look at these things. You know, and again, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but down the road, that's what we're going to need to make the decision. So we can come up with it. So some of the stuff that you heard that night, for those of you that were on the facilities committee, you're able to, you know, to take and use the public's input on that, so. Okay, well, I've got that. And again, it's, you've got electronic version two. If you want to read each of the statements, if you wonder how a statement is classified, you see each one and how we classified it under there. So that is that for that, sir?
My, my comments, like, I think this is very helpful to make sure we make a decision. But we also know that we think that the decision was made two years ago that didn't pass. So probably one thing that's most important is these tidbits. If we can keep them and figure out how to get them out to the community so they understand, like, you know, like pictures of the closet that this, she's teaching in. I mean, that's embarrassing, you know? I mean, we shouldn't want that. That's not best for our children. So how do we take those tidbits and fang them out to parents to say, come vote? Because do you want this for your kids? I don't think they truly, either they understand or they don't understand enough to get them to come out. Because we really just need yes votes. So that's all.
Do we have anybody for, we don't have anybody for public participation?
No, no, nobody's on that. We don't, we do.
I do, I have, I just have a quick question on the last thing. Can I? Just, it looked like on option one and option two on the graphs, that the positives for the community were very similar. And that the positives on option two that made it higher was staff, is that?
And I would say that is because a lot of people would have classified the staff or people who were internal people who worked on the last issue. Who their comment, they liked that plan, however, they know that plan was not successful. So.
It seemed like the community was very similar on one, too.
Yes, they were, yes, they were. And I think the staff members probably were a little more negative on number one, feel like it met the needs, but it's probably wasn't successful.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you see in the negative boxes. You see that quite often where, yeah, it's just the cost of it, so that's.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving right along. Brings us up to new business. 8B financial. Do I have a motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Work.
Yes.
8C, 1 through 12. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Schinkel, call the roll.
Mr. O'Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Work.
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
8C, 13 and 14.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel?
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Work.
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Rare?
Same.
8D miscellaneous, 1 through 4. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel, call the roll?
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mrs. Work.
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Rare?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Brings us up to Board of Education reports. Mrs. Gray, you have one?
I do, I sent all of you, um, the student success pamphlet that they put together and send out some things that I thought was really interesting. And I thought our administration would want to look at is, um, obviously some of you are going to the Board Leadership Institute, Ohio's Teacher Workforce Report. And then April is, um, the month of military children. So I don't know if we're doing something for that. I thought that was a good thing to highlight. And then, um, there is a program called Live More, Screen Less. And I'm always an advocate of less screen time for children and actually adults as well. So, um, didn't know if we wanted to look into that and try to implement something, um, for our kiddos.
Mr. O'Rare?
Uh, we, let's see, we got our invite for the Great Oaks graduation here. Everybody get, is it in front of them? Also, uh, for Live Oaks graduation, uh, Live Oaks, um, the construction should be complete by the end of July after delays, maybe delays due to, yeah, supply chain issues with everything, yeah. Rice facing, so, yeah, so that'll be exciting when they're finished that. Also, I think, uh, Mr. Snyder spoke of the additional funding, which is, we spoke of last one. Hospital new programs in each one of the buildings, the additional funding that, uh, career tech centers are getting from the state. So some things they talked about expanding like welding programs, uh, equine programs.
Mrs. Peprocky?
No report.
Let me see, you have everything?
I do not.
Okay.
I have the Goshen Education Foundation golf outing is July 21st and it is almost full. So if you have not signed up yet, you definitely want to try to sign up quickly. And if you'd like to be a volunteer, um, make sure you reach out, uh, Marjorie Hadley, so he's in that effort. Um, and the only other one, other thing that I wanted to mention, not sure if this is the right time, but, um, at some point, uh, I, I saw that our school lunch prices are increasing. And just looking at, um, like what we're offering to kids in terms of like healthiness, making sure we're aligning with what we can.
Well, the great part is Mr. Bailey will be giving a proof compliance for his, uh, report here.
Wow, thank you.
I, I told them that you're going to get.
And you ask and you oversee.
We were reading each other.
And, and, and as he'll talk about, the programs are in compliance. We're always looking to increase and get better, obviously, within budget of what you can get through as well, so, yeah.
Uh, that brings us up to the superintendent's report.
Okay, you have the goals update in front of you. And, uh, a slide up there that is going to highlight a few of the things that are on there and I'll mention when I get to that. Uh, you know, you've, you've seen Mrs. Andrews today talk about what they did at Spalding. You know, the, the core at, at our mission is that every kid is achieving continuously at higher levels. This is a time of year where a lot of our kids are getting their AP test at the high school, their end of course test at the high school, end of year assessments in Ohio. We know that a test score does not measure everything about a Goshen education. We also know that learning everything academically is a force. I love the fact that in our buildings, they've done fun activities to encourage our kids to do their very best. As she's talked a lot about using data to design instruction, we've talked about that. And I think she gave some great examples today of, of the money that we've invested to help raise our kids up to, to that educational level, to help support them. So that's really bullet number one, because we're in the heart of it now. So everybody is, uh, getting to show what they know, so to speak. That's my first two bullets. Our, uh, the fourth bullet, under academic achievement, high quality instruction, is, uh, I want to talk about the support we've been giving, uh, our teachers through our building principals. You heard the talk about academic coaches from Hamilton County, Clermont County. But also our literacy specialists have been doing a great job in that fourth bullet. And there's a later bullet that also describes it too as well, and early literacy. Where our literacy specialists are going in, meeting with teachers, uh, doing classroom observations. For example, at Spalding and GMS, uh, over 30 teachers have received support where the literacy specialist goes in, does classroom visits, gives feedback, teaches model lessons to help support them. Bottom left hand corner in the slide up there is GMS teachers Chad Mole and Jamie Boop uh, being recognized as, as University of San Jose STEM Economic Teachers of the Year. Quite an honor for them. They were the work they're doing with STEM over at the middle school. And the picture in the middle at the bottom and in the top right are two pictures of our fourth grade students who took a trip to the Underground Railroad Museum in downtown. So that's some of the stuff that's been happening academically. Early literacy, uh, it's really, it's a lot of been focusing on what are we doing in K2 at our cook? To, to making sure that we're on track and the kids are up for reading. I think they're, uh, really excited about the, the things they've done this year making a difference. Number three, target area college accrue readiness. Don't have any, uh, pictures up there because they happened Friday and I got it to get there Thursday night. But we, uh, one of the, we had our second semester flex factor competition held on Friday. GMS students delivered their final pitch presentations. This is a great program. This Friday, our first semester winners went to Sinclair to compete regionally and they were great. You saw them, uh, they came to our board meeting in January and we're excited to see what they do. Uh, so what is, if you were a flex factor, students are working to identify real world problems, develop product or process to address a problem, utilize technology to improve the product and build a business model around. And that's just, uh, I mean, that's a fantastic way to grow more than just a test score, uh, but a lot of skills around that. At the Salute Leaders Awards at Clermont County, Goshen Business Partner, ally construction industry, partners with our carpentry program here at GHS, get credentials, uh, received an award that night for the nonprofit of the year. And the last bullet in that section I really loved, we had a group of, uh, GHS students who got to participate in a three day writing bootcamp at UC Clermont. And, uh, that was a wonderful experience getting to be on a college campus, but also learning how to be better writers. So it was a great experience for them. Technology education, what you have, I believe, up there, top left hand corner is a picture of some Mrs. Tree students who got to participate at the, um, her 3D printer club. And, and kudos and hats off to Mrs. Trees because they just, uh, we just found out she got, uh, she had Channel 12 teacher of the week class. So, uh, they, uh, she took her kids down to the STEM 3D printer showcase. Fifth graders got to show off their cars, fourth graders got to show off their group Goldberg machines, which was a neat experience for them. And, uh, second bullet there, uh, we will be offering, uh, we began interviews today, uh, for high school students to intern in our tech department this summer. They went through job interviews today. And Mark Tech was on some of that, those interviews. He came back and he said, well, we interviewed four today, we got three out wins, that one, tell you after today, I want to hire all four. So we don't have three positions. We may have to do a second round of interviews, so. But we're excited to be able to offer them a real life learning experience here on our campus. Five communications. Biggest thing in there is probably the fourth bullet, new website company has been selected for next year. We are already working on the building of that website that'll be more friendly, that will also allow us to communicate more quickly across multiple platforms. So we don't have to post something in Twitter, something in Facebook, something in Instagram, something in webpage. But we'll be able to, uh, through a process called Thrill Share, be able to, uh, post once across multiple platforms. Uh, that transition is going to happen this summer for cleanup of current website. We also were featured on Channel 5 with, uh, the tornado safety and our community's response to the July 6 tornado. And I know that some of you had the opportunity to attend the Red Gray Soraya. What a wonderful alumni and foundation joint event that was. So, there's student development. I really want to point out two things, although there's a lot of there. And I will have to say, do you have the bottom right, the mother son luau at the, the PTO put on? PTO has been fantastic and supported our family, it's a fun event. They really had them trained up from middle school, uh, because I think those boys were running around in circles, jumping on top of each other. And, you know, it kind of looked a little bit like, uh, what a middle school dance looks like. Middle school boys just running around in circles sometimes, but, uh, the, and, uh, the Health Source, um, student based health clinic, school based health clinic is slated to open next week. And with that, there is an open house, if you're interested, may fourth and fourther. So, um, and we have the final meeting of the Long Term Recovery Committee meeting next week. So with that being said, uh, I did, I did have one more picture on there. And it was, uh, congratulations to Senior Gavin Thompson for signing with Miller Line. And he's pictured up there at the top, so. With that being said, uh, getting close to the graduation season here. Um, I've got the graduation dates on there as a reminder. But I do, would like to be able to report back if there's anybody that would like to attend any of these, uh, graduation dates. I believe we have one student, Laurel Oaks, just so you're aware, and we will send out school representatives. But if, if there is one of these that you would like to attend, uh, you're welcome to tell me now or give Mrs. Dietrich a call in the next 24 hours and let her know. And we'll be glad to, our SVP for you. If you want to go live, parking is limited there. So we are going to have one district parking pass. So be careful if you're wanting to attend the Live Oaks graduation. So I guess you could always make like a homecoming parade and get the back of Mr. Bailey's truck.
I'd let him know, uh, Mary Ben.
You already responded yourself, yes, as a board member there, I assume you did that?
No. Scarlet Oaks, Live Oaks.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Is, is anybody wanting to attend any other ones? If you, again, it's not, certainly not a requirement, but I know sometimes some of you guys.
Do we have anybody at Scarlet?
Yes. Yes.
I'll attend live with Bill.
All right. Anybody else have one that they would like to go to or would you like to call, um, Mrs. Dietrich? Okay. You can let me know, let me hear, Mrs. Dietrich, know in the next 24 hours and we will respond on Wednesday. And just a reminder about our graduation, the 25th, the N K U. And Mr. Bailey, or sorry, Business Advisory Committee, for those of you guys who are on that, the 26th. And Mr. Bailey?
You have the food sales compliance report on your table. How can I say, it's my answer to questions ever had there about options, but I, I am, Brooke Keun is new. She's our new food service director and has been on since March 1st. And we sat down, kind of went through this. Obviously, this report is talking about meeting compliance as far as the food, the food standards that are out there from à la carte items to the competitive food guidelines with what they have to have in a meal. You know, I think the big thing that Brooke is going to be looking at doing is providing some tasting options for kids next year to kind of freshen the menu up. There's some different days, she's starting to plan these things. Thing you have to keep in mind is it's a three and a quarter lunch. And, and you went any higher, the free student still gets it for free. So as you start going outside of some of that, the cost of things, like you could do a $5 lunch, but it's still free. So there's no, you know, there's not a lot of room there. So she's going to be looking hard at the budget. She's going to be looking at, um, kind of the process we go for creating menus at buildings, making sure that it stays inside of this compliance piece. Um, I think the one thing in talking with her early on as we toured the cafeterias is the space to offer some different options. Struggle. Just because you've got only so much space to prep, only so much of a space to kind of do the galley style, come through and get it. Which I think she's going to start to examine some different options. She's doing a new Horizon software that is wireless, so the point of sale had to be plugged in and hardwired. She's going to be able to move that now, maybe do some small, smaller option type things. But got to kind of work those things out because they all come with a price, they all come with same things in that standard. But she's, I think she's going to. all come with same, staying within that standard, but she's, I think she's going to bring some new things, and we're just going to have to be, you know, willing to take on a little bit of that change and see how it goes. But as far as food sale compliance goes, we're staying in compliance. I know Daryl talked to you guys about the order raised, that that was state, state software driven, I mean, that, as they look at the number of meals that we put out, cost of that, and they make those recommendations to go up. We did look at a lot of other districts, what their prices were, and that still kept us really in line with what is being charged out there for a typical lunch, so. Questions on?
On the free lunch, Brian? How much of that is reimbursed?
It depends, John, and that's a, that's a good question. You sit down and look at her budget, and I, I want to say.
On free, we get 100%.
Free 100% of that 325.
Of the 325, we get 100% of that back.
I don't, well, is that true? We get, you know, it's like a fuck money, fuck money.
I don't think it's the complete 325.
Reduced by 40 cents, but I'd have to get. That's the, lunch is 40 cents.
Well, I, I guess my question was, you know, do we get all of that back or part of that back? I guess, we get a reimbursement.
And, and it, and your price of your lunch is based upon their recommendation, your percentage of free students.
Right.
Inside of your building. And we all start facing, quite honestly, the other way, which you've read the articles and with the difficulty in getting our families to fill out forms, and we have yet to turn people away from having lunch, so.
So we, we have trouble getting our families to qualify for lunch.
Yes, yeah, so what happens there is that, you know, during COVID, everyone was free, so it just, you didn't have any paperwork to do, but then the state drew a line in the sand, said, hey, you know, there's no more free lunch unless you're eligible, and then we can't get the parents to do it because they haven't done it in a couple of years, so that's unfortunate thing in that respect. Yes. What percentage of our kids qualify?
Right now, we're a little over 40. Before the pandemic, we were around 50, so I don't think that 10% of those families disappeared.
Right, so maybe 10% are going to.
I would say it's probably, it's probably not 10%, but I would venture to say it's between 5 and 10.
Is it separate form, or is it a built-in kind of?
It's not.
It's got a federal.
Federal form.
It's a separate.
Yep. And we've done, we know, we, we're on our, been our 15th different strategy and working at getting that, so.
I'm sure.
Some of those parents probably don't come to campus very frequently, right? So you don't have any engagement.
We've been going to a lot of those, so. So, I mean, there's lots of challenges in food service, so.
Right.
And I think what you talked about, like, building the facilities and cafeteria space, part of that space is not to sit kids, but it's to serve kids in a different manner. But there's a limited amount of space that you have to prepare food when you talk about different options and so on and so forth, so.
Well, if we speak of adding classrooms and, you know.
More kids to eat.
Yeah, I just know, when I was at college, I worked in the restaurant business, and we expanded our seating for one of the restaurants I worked at, a fine dining place, and we didn't expand our kitchen, and they really struggled, you know, yeah, so I can see that happening, yeah, we add classroom space to the buildings. Or expanding our lunchroom hour, right? Lunchroom schedule.
Right.
And I'm sure you've thought of this, or have already thought of this, that come to get in the summer, like, free meals, like, every day, here's another form to fill out, and they still don't.
We'll certainly be employing that strategy if they show up to get that, yes.
Like, you can have an extra donut if you fill out the bar. Of course, we're not going to not give you food, but maybe you get a treat if you fill out the bar.
So then I just have a couple reminders on the board retreat coming up April 22nd, 7:30. There is a sheet with the address and directions on it, and a reminder, if you looked at your calendar, that I put out that Schoolhouse Rock is showing Friday and Saturday here at GHS. So I went down and listened to a song, Mrs. Work, and I grouped it down, and it sounded pretty good, so looking forward to the show, if I can remember all those songs.
And on Friday, if you come early, there's a high school tech meeting at the stadium here.
Yep. That's it, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, so get ready to go into executive session. The appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees, or regulated individuals, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or regulated individual unless such person requests a public hearing. So with that, do I have, do I have a motion to go into executive session? We'll do it in this room.
So moved.
Second, okay. Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mrs. Work.
Yes.
Mrs. Peprocky?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bintin?
At this time, I'll ask Mr. Schinkel.